Lord, give us some best wisdom and let's do the best job possible, dear Lord. Dear Lord, we ask you to be with these people that have lost loved ones in the last week or so, dear Lord, help their bodies and minds to heal, dear Lord. And dear Lord, watch over the people fighting sickness here lately. It's just been increasing here lately more and more. Jesus, know good prayer. Thank you.
Let the word be heard. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
When, your lockdown.
We're up. All right, thank you, Stacy. So, for those that are watching live on YouTube, if you'd like to make a comment, please feel free to call in at nine four zero two two one two one oh seven. All right, we'll move to item number three, public comments. Are there any public comments today?
I guess that would be me.
You bet. Come on up, please state your name.
Carol Willis.
I know your name, but for the record.
And I'm here because Jimmy tried to explain to me. I was expecting there was a time for public hearing and then you asked questions because we don't know.
About what?
Well, several things, and part of this was this.
Okay, that's gonna be next week is when we vote on that. We vote on that next week.
But if I had questions, you've already made up your mind by next week, correct?
Uh, well, we're gonna, I mean, we could change our mind. I mean, you know, like, we, but those are the, but those are the numbers we propose.
I understood that.
And then we're gonna, we'll hear from the public and then we'll vote on afterwards. But yeah, tell us some thoughts.
Okay, well, I have several thoughts, but I may not be able to get all of them in here. No, I, I did not know that I would get on the agenda. I wish I'd done, I would've done that today. I don't think we always know how this works. At least we in the public do not know how it works because I assumed at some point in time I'd become, have my concerns and you and Angela, does that mean you want, and I need your information? There's not a place that I can on the agenda. So that bothers me a little bit. I don't know how long you're gonna let me go because it's gonna be longer than five minutes. So, hold your hand up if your kids come in here because I have a couple of really good ones I need to get in first. But my question was about this. Uh, and if I understood you correctly last time, we gave a five percent raise last year, correct?
Mm-hmm.
We're wanting a five percent raise this year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I have a little issue with that in this economy with everything else. And I, and I'm not saying about anybody's job performance or anything else like that. It's very, very difficult for those of us like that. So you've got that five percent. With that, do you provide health insurance?
Yes.
Even to y'all?
Yes. Not everyone takes it, but it's available.
But it's available and the county pays for it.
A piece of it. But how does that work?
It's for employees, but they're dependent, they can't.
No, but it, but it is provided for the employee, so it is a compensation, correct? Okay, that's what, because it's all part of that package. You say this is what we're paying, but when you look at the compensation, it's, it's more than that. And I'm not complaining about your, but I just want to get a clear picture. So we got that, so you have that, you pay in the retirement, is that correct too? You pay it to every county.
The county does. We pay, the, we pay into the retirement and then the county matches that.
Okay, and that's kind of like a municipality kind of thing.
Right.
Okay, so that's all part of that package. I mean, the county's paying part of your plan and I don't know how that works. I'm just trying to get an overview of what that compensation is because overall, working for the county or the city, it's a pretty good job. It really is for this location. We don't have that many really good paying jobs out there unless you're a lawyer, you're a doctor, whatever else that you can achieve. So, anyway, then I looked and I don't know how many of you know, we have about eighteen thousand people in County. And that sounds really good except when you take home all the kids and stuff like that, you have about twelve thousand people who pay taxes. And I don't know if you know this, I looked up a bunch of stuff. How many households we have in the County? You have a clue? Well, my bunch didn't because they thought it was more. We only have a little over, we got about seven to five hundred households in the County. So that means, sounds like we got a lot of people, have a lot of households that pay taxes. So anyway, that's, that was one of them. So as I talk about this, and that's why I'm talking about even any kind of tax increases is extremely difficult for a lot of people who do not get a cost of living, who do not get any kind of a raise. And yet we're coming back asking them to put this extra money out so that we can give the things. And I'm not saying it's not deserved, but giving them money out of a limit, extremely limited budget where they're having to make decisions on like, do I buy my medicine? And when you're over sixty-five, thank heaven, no, no you are, but you will be, that's a real concern. Do I have enough money for my medicine? Do I have my, my food? Do I have enough money to pay insurance? And most of them don't. Do I have enough money to buy, pay my electricity and this, like everything else that's gone up? So I know you're dealing with inflation trying to make your budget work, so are we. I mean, we, it hit us just as bad as it hit you. Except we don't have a place to go to get any more money. And so those are very, very real concerns. The other thing I was wondering, and I know we're not the only ones that pay property taxes. We have businesses and that's good. But they have a way to pass their increases on to their customers. We don't have that. We don't have any other place to go. They do. So I'm, I'm really pulling on the, the property, individual property owners. We don't have other places to go. I can't raise my product price. I can't raise my room rate. I can't raise whatever because I can't do that. Our businesses can warm up their prices and that's their right to do so. But they have that. They have that opportunity, we do not. So I, I wanted to do, I know that it's very, very difficult with rising taxes. I'm asking you to really take with a mindset of that budget is, what could we put off maybe till our things get better? What could we, what's the most important priorities that we have? Maybe it is raises and I'm not opposed to that. But is there somewhere else we can cut so that we can do that without having to raise our taxes to do it all? I know we want to redo some of the stuff on our county contracts. I'm not opposed to that, but it's not falling around our edge. Our shoulders is not on that. Could we put that up? No. Those are things that I think as we as taxpayers and you decide, take that red pencil, really look at it. This is something we've got to do right now. We are hurting you in this town. There's many of us hurting you in this town. We got to help you. We elected you. We expect you now, I've got Stacy's mind, I can elect you. I can't do anything about you three, but other people. I'm just, and that's not a threat, that's not a threat on me on that. But I'm saying, we expect you to represent, I mean, I expect him to represent Carol Willis, not just his constituents. I expect him to look at me and know I've done the best for her. I expect you to do the same thing, except you got everybody. Doing things that are really big and all wonderful, we want to make us look better, we want to do this, we want, and we, I'm not saying any of that is bad. But I am saying this is not the time. Our people need some help and that's that twelve thousand people that are carrying a big load that's the majority of. Now, some people, and some of you are the composition, you have other resources. You have other resources that you can pull on and you need to do stuff. A lot of people don't have that. They are totally locked in to one, uh, resource, whether it's social security, whatever that may be. I need you people, we need you people to look at that and say, hey, we could do this next year. Maybe we do this this year, then we do this. Make a long-term plan. We don't have to all, and I know you think about this, I did, I'm not being other to you in any way. But sometimes when you look at what you've got to do, I'm not sure if you see the little parts that we're talking about. And I realize your job is not easy, but we need your help. And we expect your help because it's just, Grand Tony, this is our place. This is where I vote, where I reelect, where we do it. So that's all we're doing. We're trying to make that happen. Now, I end up getting to talk because I will. Other people, we had a bunch more people come, they're hurrying us. I can't talk, I can't talk. They're afraid, they're embarrassed or whatever else. I'm not, maybe a little embarrassed, maybe a little afraid, but I'll still do it. So, and I'm asking you to go look at this and Jimmy, and I'm gonna ask you about this and I know you can't answer me, but I'm listening. And I'm gonna be here a lot more because I've been waxing off. But you know, we've had the county barn, the arena for twenty-four years and it's still not self-sustaining. We still, and the city and the county both still pay it, which means as taxpayer I'm paying two different places to do the cost. I wondered about, and don't answer me because I don't, it feels fine. But it was a question I had and since it's not open meeting, you can't ask, can't get answered. We're gonna pay twenty thousand dollars for rubber ramps, which I know what those are because we use them. And my question was, are the people that are coming to put their horses, are we charging them so eventually we will recover that money? Don't have to answer me, but that is a question as a taxpayer I wonder about. You know, I mean, we're doing it for them, are they gonna have to pay and so we get that money back? Just a thought. Uh, let me go ahead. One of the things, we're gonna talk about salaries and add two, kind of two questions, is that if you think this is necessary, and I'm not sure you're wrong, but it is, then I want you to look for where you can cut other places to make that happen. My next question, my next little last question is this, because I did look this up. I do have a major issue with one part of this budget. And that is longevity pay, even though it's not much, for elected officials. Now, I can understand longevity pay for your people you hire, but you are elected every year or every two, isn't it every two years?
Four years.
Four years, okay, or four years. You're elected. So it looks to me, I mean, this comes across and it's not just me, I have numerous thoughts. It appears that we are paying you so that when you get elected again. So I've been elected by times, I get extra. I know at the state level, it's, it's law for them to have longevity for elected officials anywhere. I think that's something we shouldn't do here. That looks bad. It looks bad for us to, okay, you're gonna be elected and you're gonna be elected four times and I'm gonna pay you what you've been here long. And yet every time you're elected should be the first time you're here because that's what you are. You are elected at that time. The other thing I would say, this is not a big budget item, six thousand eight hundred eighty dollars a year, but that is something more than three or four months income for a bunch of people. They don't make that anywhere near that much. That's more than three blocks, three to four. In fact, I'm thinking four people right now, school teachers that don't make that much money in four months. I'm just saying, don't think that's a good look. It's a very small thing, but don't think it's a good look. And the other thing I'm asking, you may not be able to answer this, and I understand that. Uh, but this is my very last one. With the last commissioner's court meeting, you said that the renovations that we developed in the annex didn't cost the taxpayers income. Is that because we got a tax abatement or that we got some money in from somewhere else?
So it was, um, the building was donated.
Okay.
So it came from a, from a foundation.
Right.
And the money that was used to renovate it was the American Recovery Plan, ARPA money. So it was not taxed in this.
I wonder why.
It was a federal, the, the federal American Recovery Plan Act money.
So is that if we had done that, did we still have gotten the recovery money?
We've gotten money and we would've had, we would've spent it somewhere else.
Okay, that, well, that's my question because I really would like to respectfully, I do mean that in a clear sense, respectfully disagree with you on that. Any money we get into the county like this, anywhere, whether it's a tax abatement or whatever, ought to go to what we, not what we want to do. Oh, we've got this money to fix this now, we got this. It really ought to go, how do we reduce the burden on the tax?
We can do that, we can do that.
That's what I asked, that's what I asked him then.
That money, specific things we can spend that money on.
Okay, and that's what I.
One of the things we spent that money on is that we bought a two hundred fifty thousand dollar ambulance for the hospital. Two hundred fifty thousand dollars ambulance we bought over for the hospital loan. Then they come back and give you twelve, we're gonna set it back.
But, and that's what I asked you because it was not complete. But what I am saying, if we do get money in that is not earmarked.
Everything money we get in, it's gonna have earmarking on it. Anything that you deal with the state or federal government.
Okay, but part about our tax, so our tax from the wind horns and all that stuff, it just goes into our.
That goes into the general.
That goes into the.
So that should be something that we do and that reduces it. And that's what I want you to do. I want you to be right. Again, I don't always know these things. We don't, this doesn't come out. A lot of people are, we don't know in this town. That's a little on y'all and it's a lot on us. And that we ought to be here asking questions. Now, I didn't realize you can't, and thank you for answering because you didn't have to do that today, I know that. But we don't know these things and we've been kind of ignorant voters. And that's not good for you and it's not good for us. We need to know those things. But again, I'm coming to you tonight, please put this over. We need some help. I mean, we have got some major issues and we need help and we're coming here, we're coming to you. So that's my, that's my question.
Appreciate it. Are there any other public comments?
All these people, all these people are afraid.
I agree with Carol.
All right, let's move to item number four. Consider the county clerk meetings from the previous meeting, July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. We have a motion, we have a motion from Commissioner Wiley and a motion from Commissioner Cresswell to accept the minutes as presented. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item number five, consider the treasurer's financial report, updates on securities pledge. Treasurer, model?
No report. There's always a report on item number six. Consider the auditor's budget amendments and vouchers failed.
Thank you. We did have some vouchers today. The total is sixty-three thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars forty-seven cents. And out of the general fund is forty-six thousand six hundred seventy dollars, sorry, six oh seven twenty-three.
Anything in other than the routine?
Nope.
This was just a cut and dry, normal month end, month end stuff?
Yes. Yeah. State's credit truck payout, that's six thousand, I think that, and really there's really nothing else large. In the run, it's just a lot of small utilities and.
You say your drug test? Oh, you did, that's your, that is, uh, people with commercials.
Everyone pass?
I can all say, but they're still here.
All right, well, then that's a good sign that they're deciding to pass. All right, we have a motion to accept the auditor's budget's payment, but, or budget amendments and vouchers failed. Motion from Commissioner Wiley, second, second from Commissioner Shook. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Yes. Let Sheriff Babcock's here. We talked earlier about how we had our jail inspection. We passed our jail inspection, got a perfect score on that. But one of the things that came out of it is that they're called wands that the jailers use to, to, they tap each cell when they do their mandatory inspections. And what it does is it creates a log of, of when we, when we check on those prisoners. And one, it's important because by law we're required to check them every certain, every certain number of minutes. And then two, uh, if something is to happen, it's the documentation that, that, you know, if they're doing the right thing that keeps us out of trouble, uh, that our wand was failing. So, uh, we, we, Beverly went and got a quote on it. We're gonna use Senate Bill twenty-two money for it, but, and, and there's, and we do have Senate Bill twenty-two money for this. And so the new wand is gonna cost five thousand two hundred seven dollars and thirty-three cents. That's, that's year one. And then afterwards, there's gonna be a recurring charge of two thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. That's for software and mechanical updates to it. But we'll continue to use Senate Bill twenty-two money for that. And so we're factored, factored that into that, Sheriff Babcock's Senate Bill twenty-two budget for this year. And then we'll continue to put that recurring payment in the Senate Bill twenty-two going forward. But here's the kicker on it. If we lose Senate Bill twenty-two, this is something we really have to have. So, uh, we would have to transition into the main budget. But, uh, we'll continue, we'll, we'll, we'll use the supplement for it going forward. So that's really just an FYI, signed that contract this week for that. Is that the same, it's a different one, isn't it?
Yes.
Just start all over, gotta get software and all.
Yeah, things, everything's gonna change up a little bit.
The other one, the other one just, it would work seventy-five percent of the time maybe or?
The other one was the same one we've had since we built the building.
Seventeen years old.
This one she said is like a cellphone and you go by and it, it picks up on the time and they have to be there. So hopefully it'd be.
Beverly, she researched it. She kind of went through, she originally, the first time we talked, she had three or four different systems she was considering. Let's move to item number seven, discuss and consider the Texas Department of Motor Vehicles imposition of optional fees for calendar year twenty twenty-five for child safety fees. In your packet, you'll see this.
And I guess we, this comes up every year, but we haven't done it in the past.
Yeah, we have not charged this, um, in the past. I'm here, I remember last year, we did not do this. And so this would be a, this goes on your driver's license, right? So to get your driver's license, this would be an extra fee if we imposed it on your driver's license.
Maybe your registration.
On your, oh, your vehicle registration, okay. And we have not put this fee on there. Now, the money would be able to be used for roads, bridges and stuff like that.
Well, we're charging right now, ten dollars.
Yeah, we've got.
We're charging.
It's been on there forever.
Continue, and it's that same rate we've done this year. That's what that, that option.
We're not doing that dollar fifty on that cost.
We, we did option A, we've done option A?
We need to do option A. I don't know how to change. We need to block the, the, the.
No.
So it's the same as the other base here, you just like to, you should have to option A.
Oh, here's the, yeah, 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 yeah. So here shows every county what their, what last year that they did. And, um, Young did ten and.
We've done that forever.
We do that for, that's less than maximum.
Well, no, several do eleven fifty.
Well, they've got, at least they do that, that's a, a, a.
And one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. So twenty on each line times one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. This is every county in Texas. Yeah, this is literally every county does the ten dollars and that's what we do, which is the minimum. And you can do an additional dollar fifty on top of it and.
That's what I'll say.
Yeah. And I'd say twenty-five percent of counties do that extra fee.
Which, which will.
But who gets twenty more? Oh, yeah. There's two of them and they're doing the more.
Well, they're in Bexar County.
And Cameron County.
Yeah, we did a pass over the dollar a little bit. They have a project. They have a project.
You got it. All right, so are we good with the minimum?
We do, we will check that first, is option A will change.
We have a motion for no change, which would leave us at the minimum. Motion from Commissioner Rogers, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Cresswell, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Do we have one of these to sign and send in?
I can get.
Yeah, I marked on mine unfortunately. You'll give me a clean one? All right, the main event of the day, option number eight. Discuss and consider Ellen Farby's request for a new memorandum of agreement, interlocal government agreement requesting an increase in support. Requested support is eighty-nine thousand two hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty cents. Previous support was twenty-seven thousand four hundred seventy-five. Come on up. How are y'all doing today?
Good, thank you. Didn't know we were the main event though.
This is the biggest topic on today, yeah.
Wow. Um, I do have a feedback, do you mind if I bring it up to you?
Please. Oh, just for, can y'all state y'all's names so we can put it on the record for the minutes?
I'm Gina Harris, I'm the executive director for Ellen Farby Centers.
Amy Martin, Associate Executive Director.
No, this is perfect, 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 perfect. I'll give up.
That is, for the past several years, funding and services for young people.
So, let's see, the services, where's the, oh, it's down the bottom.
It's in the bottom, in the narrative part of it. So let me begin by just stating that when I apologized to you, I was given to understand from my predecessor, Roddy Atkins, that all the counties understood their hundred percent mandate. And since, since sending out the letter and MOA, I now understand that that's not true. I would've handled this much differently had I known that they didn't, that you all did not understand what hundred percent, what your hundred percent mandate was. I would've given you a phone call and talked to you about it. Or would you, would you like me to come here just right off the bat? This would've been handled much differently. So again, I'm very sorry. Anything like this in the future, which I can't imagine that there would be anything like this in the future, but nothing will be handled like this in a letter. Any changes, I'm just gonna call you and say, here's what's going on. How would you like this handled? So again, I am sorry. What was in the cover letter, letter from the contract manager, Angie Dove, is very true. We do in fact always struggle with our finances. We haven't had any increases, all that's true. But I want to go on, there's some behind the scene thing, behind the scenes things that have happened, which is why we passed for the hundred percent mandate now. It is a contractual requirement that we pass that of our counties, of our local stakeholders. And we haven't been. We haven't for as long as I have been in this company, since nineteen ninety. It's been kind of one of these, just give what you can and that's what's been documented. Why it's pertinent that we do so now is in last legislative session, Senator Lois Polkors, author of Bill Senate Bill twenty-six, which directs the Office of Inspector General to audit every one of the local police. There's thirty-nine of us across the state of Texas. And it's a service audit, but also attached on to that audit is a financial audit. They started with the first four centers. There's one not yet, but I'll also tack on when we, when we back up one step. All of us thirty-nine centers already have, let's. All of those thirty-nine centers already have what's called a single financial audit every year. And that's from an independent audit firm. Has nothing to do with us, has nothing to do with helping give services. They come in, they can look at whatever they want to, and we are completely clean. We do very well. I think you guys get a copy of it or it's made available to you, but we do very well on that. But this O.I.G. audit, they're, as I said, they're on their first four centers. It was supposed to be at maximum a six-month audit. And they're still one year into the first center they started with and haven't even started on the financial part of it. So what scared me is I have no clue what they're gonna look at on the financial end. That single financial audit does not look at match. And I don't know what the O.I.G.'s gonna look at. And I don't have any evidence in any even history that we've asked our counties for the hundred percent. We are out of compliance with our contract. I don't have it in writing that we've ever even passed. So that's why I'm sure, I'm like, we at least need it documented that we, we've met contract compliance, that we've asked for the hundred percent. That's why now, it was like, at least get it in writing that we're asking for the hundred percent. Whether anyone can give it or not, whether they meet the hundred percent, at least we're in compliance now and we're, we're there. Some of the counties are saying that they're gonna incrementally try to get there over time and that's, I appreciate it. But I just wanted you to know that behind the scenes, that's what drove it for now, by and large. The financial part is always there, that's, that's historical, we're underfunded, Texas doesn't fund mental health and I.D.D. and substance abuse. But the big thing was, I gotta get us in compliance because I don't know what's gonna happen when the O.I.G. walks in and starts auditing us. And we are out of compliance with this one measure. So that's, that's the big part of it. So that's the, that's that. And then we can go on with talking about the match itself and answer any questions. I just wanted to lay that part out so that you understood that.
So understand that the match works, that y'all are required to ask for ten percent of what the state gets from the counties, correct? As a match?
Oh.
Is it ten percent?
It's nine percent.
Nine percent?
It will vary every year, kind of depending on their decision. I think a couple of years ago it was eight percent.
Okay.
But the, the state will give us general revenue, and I think it's twelve million dollars. And they set the match at nine percent this last time and determined we should go and ask our counties, each of the nineteen, for one point three or one point four million to match that twelve million, the general revenue. So the way that that translates to what we ask for each county is we, and you have that, I believe in your packet, broken out, all the counties we serve, based on, we, we thought, based on the number of unduplicated people that we serve from each county and the bed days that they have used, many of which we, we buy from Red River Hospital mostly, which, which still holds by contract. Based on those numbers, that translates to a percentage. I think Young County was roughly using six point eight percent of the, the people we served came from that county. So that translated into the dollar amount that is the full amount of matching.
And then of that match, you don't count city matches, 'cause I know the city of Graham, 'cause I, I cheated up, I went to the city council meeting that they were at. So the city of Graham is a minority in that they actually make a contribution. One, a cash contribution to your budget, and then two, they subsidize your rent at the Helen Fairby Center over by the airport, which doesn't, that doesn't show up anywhere.
And you, uh, you'll see, because of, if you look at the bottom of your thing, F.Y. twenty-two, the amount reflected on our spreadsheet is forty-seven, and then forty-seven, and now twenty-seven. That's because the CFO took out the twenty thousand contribution from the city because we wanted to keep the municipality contributions separate from this county thing to reflect actually what the counties are giving, so that we could show anybody who's interested, we know exactly what the counties are giving, not including any city contribution. So yes, they are given that contribution. And the, they're not exactly subsidizing the property that we're using, although they have negotiated a below-market value for that facility, which we appreciate.
That's what I'm saying, subsidy, they, they, they charge in a below market.
And let me explain the reason why. The reason why I see counties in the city of Wichita Falls is because the counties in the city of Wichita Falls are the original sponsoring agencies that fund these centers, these Helen Fairby Center. That's the reason why they are the ones that are listed as the match chores that are reported to the state in that particular element, for lack of a better word. And then any other ci, municipality cities, and then there's maybe one I.S.D. or two that were put in at two hundred dollars. They, they, that match is used for other things a little bit differently. We could add them into the overall match, but then the other things that we need match for, like grants that run programs, the other things, we use that match. It doesn't just sit there and pay our salaries, we can't use it for that. It's for grants and things like that, for differing programs that we have that also are in your counties. This match for your county and the other counties and cities of Wichita Falls are reported to the state that pull down the typical revenue for routine mental health, I.D.D., substance abuse, E.C.I.
So outside of, so you give the state and then the counties, they're supposed to make up eight to ten percent of changes throughout the years. And then you get some cities and some I.S.D.s that make contributions.
Very few, very, very few, but some.
Some.
And then we use that little bit of money for that.
What are the, what are the, what have they been, grants? And then would y'all get other, y'all do fundraising, or y'all, where, where does the rest of your money come from?
Uh, there are a lot of rules about how we can raise funds like that. So the other way that we get funds to operate programs are through grants. Some of these can be federal, some are through state legislation. For example, the, there are some bills that are passed that offer or identify money for increased private psychiatric beds. They don't just give us the money, we have to apply through a process and show that we can run a program in a certain way. And then we are approved for those funds and draw the funds down with that. A lot of that goes on for substance abuse, for a lot of mental health programs, psychiatric bed placement mainly.
But every one of those require a match?
Yeah.
Everyone, it's not just free money, here, let me give you this and run this program, you have to have a match for every.
And is it dollar matches, or can you match in kind?
A few of them are in kind, like the psychiatric, um, inpatient bed that they talked about, we worked a deal. That sounds totally awful.
I didn't mean to say that.
Sorry. Let me take that word back. Worked a, way to work with Red River where they lowered the cost of the bed day rate. They're at Red River, and that lowered cost based on what their normal bed day rate works as the match, so that we're not having to write a check to them. But we worked that out with them on that particular grant. So every once in a while, we can get something in, in some manner, but many of them, like the, the programmatic ones, I can't even think, the two ninety-two, some of the near ones from San Jac, or some of them, those are actual, some of the monies that were probably not like the studies and stuff like that, those are actual dollar amounts that we have to actually come up and figure those out.
So I've been hearing you think that you haven't been asking for the hundred percent.
It could be all of them.
It's probably, probably when it was first, I would bet when we got first signed, well, when it was first signed and then re-signed, when it became Helen Fairby Centers in ninety-eight, I bet everyone probably put in their hundred percent match. And then, I'm not sure, I'm just betting. I bet everyone put in the hundred percent match and then I think it probably slipped off probably right after that.
Have y'all been able to relate to what we've been contributing over the years since that day?
We've had years that we, we've hit the black. We've also had years like this year, where almost two million dollars in the rip. And we had to shut programs, which I'm sure we're gonna talk about.
So y'all's request from us is a three hundred and twenty-five percent increase of what we've been paying. Some counties were even bigger than that, some counties were not as big, 'cause y'all had a formula of how you applied it. Wichita Falls County was massive, it was hundreds and hundreds of thousands, a six hundred fifty thousand dollar increase or something like that? What, what's your feedback been from the other counties as to, I know Jack County's, I think they're paying. 'Cause I know, y'all, y'all with the satellite office over there, I think he's having.
They increased significantly, uh, because we had identified a satellite opportunity within Jack's Row to keep people from having to drive from there to our center in Graham. Talked with the judge and he discussed, I think, an increase there that would let us basically put that money right back into a lease agreement for the, uh, for the location in Jack's Row. So that's an example.
What's the feedback been from the other counties as far as on the increases, what, what, what?
Pretty negative.
Pretty negative.
Some, some we get, or, I mean, you know, some we've gotten verbal, we're gonna get it for you, who knows? Um, one, it was now we gotta stay where we are, but we're gonna work on it for next year because it just took them by surprise. Um, others, we've still got on the schedule, you know, to go and see, so we don't know. It, it's, it's kinda all over the place. Some are saying we, we can probably do it incrementally, but I haven't seen the feedback on what that means yet. Does that mean a thousand this year, a couple, I don't know yet, I'm not sure on some of it, but we'll, we're, we're kind of, we'll wait and see where we are.
But you know what's sad is in this deal, our public don't realize how much our bill probably has increased over the last few years. But we've heard from legislators saying how much they're gonna help us in this situation, but we really haven't seen a whole lot of help. I know what they're fixing to put in up there, what you call it, the hospital up there, it's millions and millions of dollars that they're fixing to go into.
And therein is the problem. In the last legislative session, every bit, I mean, they, they...
They promised the money, but they don't even reach the stores, you know?
Yeah. The agenda was to fix mental health. Well, mental health was fixed because in their mind, all the money went to state hospitals and state support living centers. And I'm getting, I'm going to, I'll, I'll put this on there. Senator Lois Polkhorst, the one that I just referenced, was Senate Bill twenty-six. She is not a proponent of outpatient care. She, she, she's not a fan of ours, I don't know, understand why, not, not us particularly, all across the state. She, she backs inpatient care, residential living centers, and that's where she feels like all of our people should be. And she put not any money into outpatient care. Every dollar went to state hospitals, state support living centers, building residential treatment, every dime. And, and I, I do not, I don't in any way begrudge our state hospital friends or any of them, but they had just gotten a huge, huge amount of money for, for raises and increases and all sorts of that stuff probably eight months before. And then during that legislative session, a bunch of money went back to them and they got yet another raise, pardon me, another raise. And, I mean, to the point that they started cherry picking our, our staff and some of our very best staff. I mean, I have executive staff, that they couldn't turn that down because you have wonderful insurance opportunities. Those salaries were higher than what we make, I mean, by like double. I mean, it was, it's, so every dollar went their way, nothing came to outpatient care.
But she don't understand how many mental health, often we have in our jail right now, population of state of Texas, that can't be taken in there in those situations.
There's a waiting list to build those structures, it's not even built yet.
Yes, sir. There's, there's one place, he said, there's like four hundred beds, but only can use two, I heard, because there are other two that are stacked. And I've had talks with senators and representatives, and I said, what did y'all's deal? Well, we can't find people to work. I said, you're gonna have to increase the pay, or the what they're making out here in, in the real world, you know?
Well, we have someone in court that we need to see if they're, if they're competent to stand, you know, to be in court. It's a six, six-month waiting list before we can get them seen.
We got, uh, we got new money in Wichita County to do jail-based competency. That's something we have, again, another thing we had to apply for and try to create a program. We don't have the staff to do that unless they get, give us the money, which they did. We're working in that county trying to, with the people that are there.
Only in Wichita County then?
It's only for Wichita County, yeah, it's county by county. Um, going back to the hospital thing, the, the improvements they're making at Wichita Falls actually don't increase bed day capacity at all, it, it actually increases. They're making facility improvements that they're actually...
It's cosmetic.
And put lift in the B.
They had a big wall because they're having some maximum security people who will be housed out of there, but doesn't increase the bed, which is why we had some other money transferred to us for private psychiatric beds, which we're supposed to now go and find private psychiatric hospitals like Red River to try to create those placement options. So we'll continue to do that all day long.
And, and to your point, Judge Graham, we're starting a program there. We're hoping that this will be very successful and then we want to roll stuff out into other communities. So we can report back, if you guys are interested, we've got a jail-based competency one. We've also got one that was kinda like what you were talking about the other, a couple of weeks ago, with F.C. City News. We've got one that we're teaming up with the police, um, and also fire department and having a mobile team that's gonna go around and do assessments on the spot. And that way they're not going to the R, not going to the jails. We're taking care of it and determining, you know, outlook right there. So we've got some stuff that we're doing, starting in Wichita Falls, but hopefully we're gonna get successful. We've got the grants done, we know what works and what doesn't, and then we'll start going to other communities if, if other communities want to get in, want to do that as well, so.
Well, you got one person that I'm thinking of, that came into my court, didn't think he was competent to stand trial, put him on a waiting list, only thing we can do is release him. Well, he's been back in my court for new crimes, I mean, it's just kinda like, you know, I don't know what you did. You can't, you can't keep him in jail, you can't put him, you can't, I don't know, you're kind of like, you're income.
The problem is period what you really realize, I mean, you.
I agree.
So they came two, two, three weeks ago, talked to the city of Graham. City Graham's one of the few cities that, that does, as a city makes a contribution. They've been at twenty thousand, they decreased to fifteen thousand because of the loss of the I.D.D. services, the D.A.H. services, it's not total loss of I.D.D. services, but, uh, they've been very involved with, um, creating the new I.D.D. facility that's gonna go over by, by the library in the old modern white building.
And still, sadly, they're coming out of Wichita.
Big heart.
Yeah, big heart. Um, you wanna, you wanna, y'all, I thought you did a really good job of explaining that to, to City. Why don't you explain kind of y'all's thought process on dropping the I.D.D. services?
We were, well, speaking of the legislative session, I, I held on as long as I could. That was not, I, I did not want to lose that service, that's not something that I wanted to do. But that, that particular service is not one that's funded well. The local authorities, okay, how do I explain this? We, we are capped as the number of people that we can serve in I.D.D. provider services, okay? Back in two thousand and four, what I'll term private providers all went to the legislature and said, the local authority have the monopoly on getting the people in I.D.D. provider services and it's not fair. the local authority have the mon- monopoly on getting the people in IDD provider services, and it's not fair to us as the private provider. What you need to understand is as a local authority, us and the other thirty-eight of us across Texas, by state law, anyone that wants to enter into IDD services must come to us for eligibility determination of IDD, okay? It's an intake, they come in, they see us, we do all the testing, we do all the psychological exams, all that sort of stuff. So, they spend a whole lot of time with us being determined whether they have intellectual and developmental disability or not. So, when it comes time for a person to sit down and say, okay, what was called HCS, Home and Community Based Services, it's now called Individual Skills and Socialization, it just changed over time, I'll get to that in a minute. They're given a huge list and they are told to pick what provider you want. Well, guess what, and we'll use us as an example, Helen Fairby Centers is on that list, who do you think they're gonna pick? They've spent a lot of time with us, by and large, they're gonna pick Helen Fairby Centers. So, in two thousand and four, the private providers who were also on that list went to the legislature and I have to agree with them, all of us local authorities that saw these people or see all these people first, we did have an undue advantage against the private providers, because we've spent tons of time determining their eligibility. So, they like us, they're comfortable with us, so at that time, our legislature said, yeah, you do have an unfair advantage. We're capping all you local authorities at a small number of people that you can provide services to. So, across the state of Texas, all of us were capped, we were capped at fifty. There's also, there's a tiny appeals process in there where a person who goes around and tries to find another private provider and they just, if they're not working, can come back and write out an appeal to HHSC, and if it's granted, they can come to us if we're already at our fifty limit, so we were actually, when we terminated our contract, at sixty-two, so at the time that the legislature, I will say, put the cap on the local authorities across Texas, they also put into state law that over time, it was their anticipation that the local authorities eventually would phase out a provider services company. That was the plan, was that we would no longer be providers of services. I suspect that's probably why they, they, they simply will not put money into that program. That's probably it, so let's just leave that there, but the reason why the math won't work is because of the money. They will not fund it to cover the cost of doing business. It works for the private provider because they have huge number of people that they're serving, and it's funded based on the level of need that the person is. So, if you have a high level of need, you get paid more dollars, if you have a lower level of need, it's less. But when you have tons of people that you're serving, those dollar amounts, you can make money. When you're capped at fifty people, the, the, the math doesn't work. We were gonna lose almost one point eight million dollars on that program alone this year. And I finally, and, and the, the dollar amounts, we had been covering with, with local funds year after year after year, but when they finally changed it from HCS to that Individual Skills and Socialization, what they did at HHSC is they took the budget for HCS and backed in to Individual Skills and Socialization, which that ISS, that Individual Skills and Socialization, had a higher staffing ratio for client setting. What used to be, you could have one or two staff in a room of thirty-five to fifty people, but now you had to have two staff to one person with a high level of need. It, there was no way to make it work because I would've had to hire like, two crews of people to cover the sixty-two people that I had. I, I, I couldn't, I, I had to finally grow in the town, I, I, there was no way. So, there is where we were, and I, I just couldn't do it anymore. When I knew, I knew, under contract, we have provider, capped provider side, and we have an I, IDD authority side. Under contract, our authority side must, must place every one of those IDD people on our caseload with another provider. They have to, they, they couldn't not, they had to. So, you know, I appreciate that the ARC decided to jump in, but even if the ARC had not, they would've been placed with someone. They, they would have, because there, there's no way they would not have, they would have been placed with the private provider. So, I knew that was gonna happen, so there, there, while I, I, I lost a lot of sleep and there were lots of tears involved with shutting that program down, it was more because I knew a lot of those individuals myself, and I just, I didn't want them to leave our care, but I knew that they were going on to someone else to care for them because we had to do that, we had to do that. So, therein is how it all came to be, and not easy decisions, but one you have to make when someone's, when we were gonna go bankrupt. We, we would, there's no way you're gonna.
And a decision a lot of other LMHA's or local authorities in Texas have made already. We're, we weren't the first one to shut that down, and there are still others making that decision. So, the exact scenario that's played out for us happened to them, leading to those boards to make those decisions for those authorities, it's the same thing.
So, would you ask, is there a thousand dollars for IDD?
I'm sorry, what?
Would you ask, is still over eleven thousand dollars for IDD services?
Uh, yes, because that, that's still based on the number of people we have in authority services. We still keep all those same people on the authority side in which we, we do the person-directed plans that authorize the care that another provider will provide. We have to do those periodically, complicated, there's ongoing assessments, there's coordination of their care, which is making sure that they're getting the service from another provider that the plan says they're gonna get. It's a lot of oversight, uh, what I mean is looking over and ensuring things happen, so that authority part, yeah. We have a whole department that's still full of employees, we have to pay, and they're still doing that work.
So, just to make sure that you did, those sixty-two, we still seeing them? Just because we don't have the provider side, we're still seeing the sixty-two?
No more questions, this is kind of our, this is our opportunity to get all the questions out. Travis, do you have any questions?
Oh, sure.
The one thing I learned a couple of weeks ago, because I'd always been told that, you know, because we're, we've applied for the grant to, um, respond to mental health crises at home, where we're gonna have a deputy that's gonna be able to go to the, on the scene, we're gonna have a nurse that's gonna go on the scene, and I mentioned we're gonna have iPads to, to bring in that. And then I learned a couple of weeks ago that y'all would actually go on the scene as long as you have some way to ensure that the scene was protected. And I've been told numerous times that that could never happen.
Yeah, and that happened, that happened this weekend with me, another individual.
Yeah.
Where I called them and they came out, I don't know who told you that, but.
At this table.
Forever and ever and ever, as long as I've been here, they have always come out anytime I need them.
Well, that's, that's gonna be, we can utilize that if we, if we give this plan.
And with this new bill, if we get it, we can always, we can also, uh, we're gonna fix it to where we can, you know, zoom in and do it without having to transport somebody, especially if they're not under arrest. You know, if they're just someone that needs helping and they're in a mental crisis, I mean, all we gotta do is get on the, uh, an iPad or whatever and zoom into their house, they can do it from their home.
Whether you get the, the grant or not, we can do that, yes. And our, and since we, since we spoke at the city council, I went back to our crisis director and every center manager and I explained, I don't know what people are saying to our local ERs or law enforcement, and when I say people, I mean, those who are on our call twenty-four seven. I don't know if they're trying to avoid another twenty minutes of travel going to somebody's home and they're saying this to a person. But the effect is, now, uh, commissioners, councilmen, all, a lot of different people are under the impression, at least in this county, that we're not going to a person's house, when the training, every time we do crisis training, is you go where you're needed to go. Now, the caveat there is, if the scene is not secured, we're not just gonna go, well, somebody, well, you say that.
We're irresponsible, we're irresponsible.
But there was another county, and this is very recently, a person is playing Russian roulette, literally with a weapon, and law enforcement says, just go, go and assess them. If that's an unstable person with a gun, we're not gonna go there, okay? But if law enforcement can secure the scene, we're, we're gonna go there all day, that's the training. And so I said, don't let that ever leave your mouth again, if it ever did, and I don't know, but just make sure. You go where you're asked to go, and our standard is to get there in less than an hour. Now, to make sure that that happens, we have put people, our crisis responders, in hotel rooms if they are responding and filling in from other counties. We put them in a hotel room closer to the place where they may have to respond, so that there's not a delay, okay? We do that because our understanding and belief and expectation is that they will go. So, if you, if you secure a grant, those two personnel are gonna work in that way, that's fine. But even if you don't secure the, the third mental health part of it, we're still gonna be dispatched by crisis when you call the hotline, and we will go to that location. That's our training, and if there's a problem with it, or if somebody's not doing it, we need to know who said it, when they said it, who was on call, report it to me and I'll find out. I spoke with Chief Bullock at the city council meeting last time, so that we can get together and understand what the processes are and what any challenges are in this community with those procedures that we kinda have to stick with, and what's the training and workaround we can do for it. We're meeting with, I'm coming back up here again with Kyle tomorrow, we're gonna have a meeting and see what's going on. That's the way I work through this stuff, call us, and we'll come, we'll figure it out.
So, the only thing like I have had, had times issues with calling the crisis, that right there with, you know, seems like it's fixed itself, the people I've talked to, you know, it's like you're telling them what's going on with the individual, and they, and they'll say, oh, yeah, I have to look, we'll get somebody over there. But I mean, there's a process we have to go through, and, and it is calling the one eight hundred number. And without doing that, that process kinda fails, so. But I mean, and maybe you need to explain more about that one eight hundred number and how we, who we talk to, and it's not actually our caseworkers.
Yeah, we have, we maintain a co- a hotline twenty-four seven, we do that with Bale Solution, I think that's her name, Bale Solution, yeah. Their company, and their call center is, where is that?
Corpus.
Corpus, yeah, two different places. They have to answer it immediately, they have trained clinicians who answer the phone, okay?
They're, they're, well, I mean, they're actually at, at least bachelor's levels, some of them are master's level clinicians.
So, what we do with the hotline is we tell them, every county that we serve, who's on call, their name and phone number for that county for that day, they always know who they're supposed to contact, okay? So, sometimes when anybody in their community calls the local center down the road and says, somebody's in crisis, we need help, if they're ever told to call the hotline, that's for a good reason, okay? Because first of all, we get a lot, and you'll see this on your.
We've been told that every time we call the local one, they go, call the hotline.
Yeah, that's a procedure, and here's why, because we get a lot of calls through that hotline that we don't have to respond to, okay? Now, some of those who are calling the center may be a different case, but maybe half of the calls that actually hit the hotline, we are scrambled off to go and see them. Some can be handled by the clinician, some they just need information. They all go through there and they all spit out data so that we can track who in the community or how often that hotline resource is being used, okay? That tells us, keep funding it, make sure you keep it going, okay? So, when you call the hotline, they know exactly who's supposed to be responding, and they will call that person's cell phone, send them out. There should be, I recognize that there may be a twenty-second delay between you calling one person and being asked to call an eight hundred number, but that's really what gets the whole ball rolling, okay? So, that's the reason for the eight hundred number, we don't experience problems with it by and large, as far as I've heard.
And maybe I talked to Saturday, very polite.
Yeah.
Very knowledgeable.
Yep.
And the caseworker was there within thirty minutes, had a bad person in the house.
Yep, that's how it should work.
Is the IDD chief still dismembered with him?
Um, as far as I know, I haven't talked to him, he doesn't communicate with us, which is part of the problem. If there's a, if there's a problem with our operations from any city in the nineteen counties we serve, the solution is not to form your, necessarily form your own authority, which is a vastly complicated thing and couldn't even begin to describe how a county would get out of work, network, make their own thing. Or, uh, that's not the solution, or the full funding, because you don't like, you know, kind of what you're seeing. The solution is, let us talk about it and fix it, and we will come and do training, we'll make sure our staff are trained, we'll problem solve a lot of stuff. The, the, the basic procedures that we train on for our crisis response, the way that it should work based on rules, is one thing. And then each community may have a different way to tweak that that works the best for their community. So, we've been to, we've been to Jack's Grove, we've, we've been to lots of different places, you know, trying to work on it and make sure everybody is good with those procedures, so, yeah, make everybody happy, but. Oh, yes, sir. Yep.
Yeah, we have, I've known probably a few times that at least half of the people that we have in jail seek y'all's services. And that's a lot, and without that service here, we would have to transport them out of town somewhere.
But what I might strike them with is if I see somebody that has answered that criteria, I order them to be seen by and made to park prior to their being released from jail.
Plus, with the other services that we started using also, you know, the, uh, drugs and the alcohol, uh, that part right there, a lot of them are taking that and using that services that y'all had there too. And that was the whole plan of using that services, I don't know, we're getting off on a bit, but they're still wanting y'all's services. They can start while they're in jail, and in that way, if they know when they get out that they were to go and they've already been gone, so they can continue that service, instead of saying, okay, when you get out, go see these people here. When they get out, I guarantee they're not gonna go, ninety percent of them. Now, but if they started that service while they're in jail, and they're doing, it, it makes them wanna keep doing that. So, I applaud that part.
Well, we're also implementing our phone condition where we can kinda help them stay, stay on their beds.
Yep, continue to do it. There are, uh, court ordered outpatient services, I'm sure you know about that, in which, uh, if they're ordered to attend our outpatient services, we have to report back to the court every thirty days about whether they're doing that, did they make their intake, are they doing their follow-up appointments, like, so.
So, I'm gonna follow up on something that you guys said when y'all were at the city council, because you're requesting eight thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars from us. Which you're hoping that that's what we fund, but if we don't fund, you'll still be providing services. So, we're gonna have to figure out, we're gonna need to sit here and figure out what we can afford to pay, pay you to this. Um, it's an expensive sys- system to run, it's a lot of people, it's a lot of offices, it's a lot of, you know.
Yeah, every, everything that we just described was not to convince you to pay a certain. to pay a certain amount so that you can have that. That's stuff that we do based on our standards that will continue. They asked at the city if they were to go to zero, what would change? The answer is nothing would change because we're still, we still have to see the people who need to be seen medically. And we still have to respond to things and based on the rules. So, that's not gonna change. I say no.
Okay, with the city grants commitment, y'all, you'll still have presence out here in there?
Oh, yeah. We're, we're still in. That's not changing. Even if they, uh, they even brought up whether we need the amount of space that we have out there now because our staffing has changed because of that program. If the ARC really moves out of there, there's, they're still there using the facility. But if that were to be, uh, vacant, maybe we don't need all that space. But put it somewhere and we can just keep doing the job.
Well, I'm speaking for myself here, but they, they kinda understand that we might have to have financial commitments at the ARC as, as this mission is called. We might have to support that enough to, therefore, we gotta watch every dollar we can.
I can understand that thinking. Um, at the same time, we did offer to continue to let them have that space that they're currently using at no charge, which they rejected, so. You're-
You also offered giving vehicles, all the equipment.
Vehicle, furniture, space, everything that currently is required to run that program. We offered them with no charge to continue to operate it. So, if they're asking for additional funds because of some other facility or needs, uh, from our perspective, um, that's a preference, not a need.
And, and again, I know, I mean, I think probably it's one of those, what's done is done. But again, I tried to explain sort of ahead of time. I, I was, I appreciate the ARC and the fact that they wanted to do this. However, the folks would've been, been placed with a private provider.
Wouldn't nobody told us, they had to tell them how, to be on?
We had folks that were telling a lot of people that, a whole lot along the way. And this was, and there, there should be no financial burden to this, this county or the city at all. The ARC, this is an ARC choice.
I think communication about the termination of that program could've been better.
A lot.
But, yes, sir. Part of, but part of the information we did try to get out there was that we have people who are being served in programs and our job is to make sure they continue to be served. At least that was said and not explicitly described.
Well, we got described when y'all sent a letter saying y'all were terminating the program. And that was the gist of it. It's a program that's been used in this community for years. And to just have it pulled out from under the people, we were trying to help the people, not-
Sure.
And, and not just sit here and wait till, and hope that they had somewhere to go. And nobody kind of explained that they did have something, but it was going other place.
Well, I'm sorry, I came out of the end. I'm sorry.
We were, uh, he was asking how much money we give ARC. Right now, we give the ARC nothing. But we, we, last year's commitment for I D D with Helen Farabee was eight thousand dollars. And if we reduced it, when they dropped the, the day have program, we agreed that we were gonna cut that in half. So, we've got four thousand dollars that we didn't pay to Helen Farabee that we talked about giving that to people at the ARC. But we have no commitment to the ARC at the time.
So, there's still not cost, I see, at this point?
No. Cities play more involved with it. No, I, I, I told them, you know, we can't actually ask for it. Yeah, we, we talked about it, but I've asked them to come ask for it so that they can give us some work. Or is it just give it to? I, I believe so, but I haven't, I haven't gotten them in a while. I think they bought the building, three hundred thousand dollars in the building. It's what I think I did. So, any more questions? Please find them. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's something we're gonna talk about when we get into the rest of the field. Put that as part of your sports. Okay, let's move to item number nine. Discuss and consider the bond supervision contract for twenty-four, twenty-five. This is in your packet. We send this to, it's an interlocal agreement between, um, to the right of the page. Young County, City of Graham, City of Omni, Stevens County, and City of Breckridge. Basically, um, we combine, you know, we have one bond supervision program for two counties and everyone kind of contributes a piece of it. The breakout, um, was Cheryl worked up this year's. City of Graham, twelve thousand five hundred. Young County, nine thousand two hundred fifty. City of Breckridge, seven thousand five hundred. Stevens County, seven thousand. City of Omni, four thousand.
This is what it's been from the beginning. Uh, the only reason we're doing this little early, we, since the out, the invoice in, in, in November is payable in January. But, um, because of that, um, we request people to do the contract and make sure that it's-
And these contracts are twenty-year contracts, so we have to live with it every year. Uh, and this is no change from last year.
Okay.
So, we have a motion to approve this agreement to propose to the other entities. Um, motion from Commissioner Preswell, second from Commissioner Wiley. Any discussion or concerns? All in favor? Any votes? Motion passes five zero. Do I send this or you send it?
Um, we usually send them out, but whatever.
I'll let you do it. So, like, so you would test the, is that the court? This is bad. Turn on. Sorry. I feel like we're running out of time now. All right, let's move to item number ten. Discuss and consider putting a base material for ladder truck for the volunteer fire department station number five presented by Commissioner Preswell.
That kind of being asked for me, the, the one truck sitting there and just the weather alone. Get real rainy, it'll go to sinking on one side. It just doesn't have enough compaction in the soil there to keep it from sinking, so we can go shake that off and do it kinda like with the parking lot over here. And the load, probably we did it maybe to the most and we've been able to make it work. If we need that ladder truck, it will move without being stopped.
So, this is Salt Creek, right?
Yes, sir. Salt Creek, while they're firing.
It's the one you'll, when you drive down the three eighty bypass and you just kept going straight to the park. You'll see it parked there on the corner.
Yeah, they don't have nowhere else to park, really.
It won't fit in their garage.
No. And so, I mean, that's really their option is to, to a little bike start there and like it where it sits right and doesn't sink, or figure out somewhere else to park it.
And maybe remember, um, the fire truck that was getting replaced. Not one of our departments wants it. So, we'll, we'll be putting that on launch. Uh, or they may, maybe? Yeah. Um, do we have a motion? Are you making a motion?
I like the motion.
Commissioner Preswell's making a motion to put some rock down underneath the new ladder truck on Salt Creek. Um, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Wiley. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any votes? Motion passes five zero. All right, this is Commissioner Wiley's item. Discuss and consider installing a fan coil unit in elevator control room. Tim?
Uh, if y'all remember, one of the bids that we got from the elevator company that's gonna give some bid to update our elevator, they requested that we put in a mini split, which their bidding price was nearly twenty-two thousand dollars. And, uh, I thought, well, I'd get these people down here, down in lane, and see if we can take one of our units that we're not using, like this right here, install it in there, go across the hall and tie into our existing system and do away with, save some money. So, that's what we did. So, eleven thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars is what they can add to the bid, be able to, uh-
Compared to the what?
Twenty-two thousand dollars.
So, that cut it in half doing that. Uh, and then with the new equipment though, you, it's even more important to keep that room cool because the, when we, the new elevator that we're talking about replacing, um, it, it's gonna be more sensitive to heat than the older system.
And so, what I thought was, if we wanted to go ahead and do this, we could go ahead and get them to install it. So, we're gonna be in place when we're gonna sit up there and sit at the waiting back there for it and then come back and do it in place. At least it'd be one thing out of the way and be done with. Uh, once we do renovation and get them in the home, we're gonna have three of these units left. We can put somewhere, so one of our owners go out and we'll have a place to replace it. But, uh, the other thing we're doing is, we should've got back, uh, we're sending off, Cheryl's sending it to the elevator to take off the air conditioner and the, uh, fire alarm system and re-bid it to see what the price could have to affect.
The bids on both of those, we have to replace. So, if the thing doesn't break down, what we gotta do is, they, they can't get parts to them. We're gonna be dead in the water. We haven't gone out to bid on it yet.
We'll have to go out.
We'll have to go out and bid on it.
This is, this is giving us an idea about what we're willing to do.
We gotta have some number to put in there, but, uh, but, but yeah, we will, I mean, it'll be, it'll be bid out.
Yes.
All right. You making a motion to extend, to take this eleven thousand dollar, three hundred, eleven thousand three hundred seventy-five thousand, eleven thousand three hundred seventy-five dollar bid to, um, replace, install the fan coil in the elevator control room? Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Chud. All in favor? Uh, any votes? This is five zero.
There's money in the, uh, uh, courthouse maintenance.
Yes, there's still the money in there that we put for renovations, which that's quite not gonna be done this year. So, we just paid part of maintenance on the courthouse.
Paid for our courthouse.
About two hundred fifty.
Item number twelve, discuss and consider the burn bin.
For what?
We all keep it on? All right, no last? Yes. So, we'll move into the budget workshop. Let's take a ten-minute recess. A little potty break.
Grant, I wanted to ask you something-
Sure.
Real quick about the, uh, the tax collector collector renovation that's gonna happen.